Order. Um, and what we're going to do is we're going to have Peyton and Cass come up to the up in front here while they leave the pledge of allegiance. And those are our two crocking princesses. So if you guys want to come up a little further and Peyton, I knew that you did this last year. So I would start us off. So everybody will rise for the pledge of allegiance. It's flag and are we ready? One, two, three.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Katie, assuming everyone here. Your attendance very good. Thank you very much. Uh, we will go through three with the approval of the minutes. We'll look for an approval of the May fifth, twenty twenty five village board meeting, and then we look to file the February twenty fourth, twenty twenty five joint library board, the March third, twenty twenty five finance and personnel committee, the March twenty fourth, twenty twenty five joint library board, the April eighth, twenty twenty five public safety committee, and the April ninth, twenty twenty five architectural review board. I'd like to get a motion in a second to move that to the table.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
We got Amy and Dave. Any questions? Any correction? On the minutes, seeing them, hearing them, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that motion carries. All right, we come to this very important point. Uh, persons requesting to be heard, um, does anybody here wish to speak? On a item, very good. If you please come up. And um, I know it's who you are and where you're from, and we'll get you started here. You get three minutes, uh, and we'll move ahead.
My name is Nicolette Burkhild. I live at forty one twenty six North Newhall Street, Shorewood, Wisconsin, five three two one one. I have been employed by the USS Liberty Memorial Public Library for ten years, currently as the head of youth services. My public comment is a bit on the detailed side, but also very important. Um, if you are not aware, the library's nineteen eighty six joint library agreement is set to expire on June twelfth of this year due to action taken by the town of Crafton a year ago to terminate the agreement. If no resolution is struck before the expiration date, the USS Liberty Memorial Public Library ceases to be a public library and its current governing board dissolves. In order to keep our library in good standing and compliant with state statutes, immediate action is needed to take it to be taken by June twelfth. The three options for moving forward are to establish a new joint library between the village of Crafton and the town of Crafton, create a single municipal library under the village of Crafton, or extend the nineteen eighty six JLA for one more year. Negotiations for a new joint library agreement or JLA between the village of Crafton and the town of Crafton are ongoing. But even if you were to vote on a new agreement today, it would still take up to ninety days to get the agreement approved by the state of Wisconsin and Anozaki County, taking us beyond the June twelfth, twenty twenty five deadline. Creating a single municipal library under the village of Crafton would have a shorter approval process, but would take significant time to organize, also taking us past the June twelfth, twenty twenty five deadline. This leaves us with the sole option of extending the current JLA through this resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the village of Crafton and the town of Crafton. With additional deadlines at the municipal, county, and state levels that contribute to funding formulas and the overall budget, a one-year extension allows all parties involved to take appropriate action before the JLA expires. The dates set forth in this MOU will allow the library to receive consistent and predictable funding through December twenty twenty six, while giving our two municipalities time to explore all options.
Thank you, Nicolette. Please come up. Again. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Julia Lee and my address is sixteen oh nine South Pine Street here in Crafton. I'm the circulation services manager at Crafton Public Library as well as a proud resident of the village. I'm here to urge you to approve the resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the village and the town of Crafton, an essential step to ensure our library continues serving the Crafton community. Our library is far more than a place to check out books, though we do have thousands of those. It's a gateway to opportunity. It offers free access to the internet, research databases, and digital resources like Libby where residents can read or listen to ebooks, e-audiobooks, and e-magazines from home. The library is also a hub for learning. From Storytime, so some are reading program to our library of things and engaging programming for all ages, the library provides access to experiences that foster a love of learning and build community. For those facing financial hardship, it provides vital services like job search assistance, computer access, and a warm welcoming space with no cost of entry. Without the MOU to keep us in compliance with state statutes, these services are all at risk. We're not just talking about programs. We're talking about people. People who rely on the library every day to read, to learn, to connect, and to grow. Without the MOU, we will no longer be a public library as of June twelfth, and the people we serve will lose all these essential resources. Losing our public library status also means we will no longer be a part of the monarch library system. That means we lose internet access, databases, interlibrary loan, and even the ability to check out any items to the public. Let's protect what we've built, and let's show that in Crafton, we invest in opportunity for everybody. Please support the library by voting to approve the resolution tonight and give us the chance to build a future for our library and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Julia. Anyone else wish to speak on any item? Anyone? Okay, very well. We'll move on to business presented by the president. Um, one uh, that is not on the agenda for this evening is the poppy proclamation. And we do this every year, and I'm very happy to make a proclamation in support of the American Legion Auxiliary uh, for our poppy princesses and for the knowledge of the top. We're at America's land that we deserve and protect willingly and freely as citizen soldier team. Whereas a nation at peace must be reminded of the price of war and the debt owed to those who have died in war. Whereas the red poppy has been designated a symbol of sacrifice of all lives and all wars, whereas the American Legion Auxiliary has pledged to remind America annually of this debt through the distribution of the memorial flower. Therefore, I, Daniel the War, village president of the village of Crafton in Ozaki County, Wisconsin, to hereby proclaim the twenty third and twenty fourth days of May, twenty twenty five as poppy days in the village of Crafton, Wisconsin, and ask that all citizens pay tribute to those who have made the ultimate sacrifice in the name of freedom by wearing the memorial poppy during this month. So I'd like to invite the ladies to come up. Our cotton princesses up here if you want mine. Come on up. Don't be shy. Come right around the back here, and I think we're gonna wanna come on right around here.
Come on.
Yeah. There we go. And we have Cass Fisher, who is the judge meeting in white. And then we also have um, edit up here. He's our returning poppy princess, so I should have that memorized, and that's Peyton Arvai. And if you guys want to come here, you can either side of me. Sam, this is a great time to come up and take a picture of it.
Yeah.
Uh, we're gonna do this relatively quickly, so please. We're gonna look at your, their, it's very, very. Or that is signless. It doesn't matter. Okay, and certainly, there we go. There you go, smile. We'll get one couple more here. Smile, look at the camera.
Yeah.
No, no. Yep. There we go. We'll hold the proximity. It sounds good. Whatever seemed once, we give. Otherwise he gets cranky. Yeah. It's not too many hairs. Get ready, Mark. Good. These two get together now. Um, you have to step forward. Get behind her a little bit. There you go. And hold up your poppies. I want to see your poppies. They're real good. Real good. Poppy there. A little closer together, guys. There we go. There we are. That's it. Over here. That seems like you're standing. Hey, I don't know if we have one more time. One. Yeah. Keep looking over here. Hey. Who can put in the? Hey, I don't get it because somebody have their fingers in front of their mouth. Now. Yeah. Oh, gee, once again. Hey. Look up the camera. Now, show me the bottom skin. Real good, real good. Yeah. I didn't want to look at more. Sure. All right, uh, second time here, I'm uh, going to be agreeing uh, a uh, uh, my appointments to the board uh, for committee commission appointments. Uh, essentially, everybody's appointed. That was appointed last year with the addition of uh, three folks who are being uh, brought on. That would be Marie McFall. So, so, who else? Go ahead.
Joseph Cal. Joseph Cal.
Joseph Cal. We got the, and um, and Marie McFall. So I'll look for a motion in a second. Bring this to the table for a vote. Sir, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you very much. Any uh, quick discussion? Yes, please.
I just wanna remind um, ourselves, us, to change the date, um, Katie, on this front of the sheet. It says citizen appointments pending village board approval, changing it to May nineteenth. And the other is that um, I think Marie McFall's term is erroneous, and it should be, oh, thank you. Twenty twenty. Twenty.
Those.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you, sir.
I know that's it.
Okay.
Don't change.
Maybe. And I'm motion very, saying very much. Let's go to our resolution amending boundary lines uh, in village of Crafton, Jesse and Katie.
Yes, I guess I'll bat lead off here um, with a high level overlook of this uh, item before the board. We have resolutions before the board to update uh, ward boundary lines uh, for the village of Crafton, but also the Ozaki County Supervisory District map. This is in response to development on the west side of the village. The proposed Hawk Ridge, Hawks Ridge Landing subdivision is comprised of annexed property and existing village of Crafton property. The existing village of Crafton property uh, currently is a part of village of Crafton's Ward One and Ozaki Supervisory District Twelve for voting purposes. The property that was annexed was part of the future um, Hawks Ridge from the town of Cedarburg uh, is placed into the village of Crafton Ward Fifteen and is currently part of the supervisory district number nine. There are currently no voters registered in this area. However, the clerk's office looking to be proactive is looking to make the subdivision uniform for voting purposes. Therefore, the um, resolutions are brought to the board for your consideration this evening. Um, for further uh, specific detailed information, I would turn over that to um, Clerk Olson.
All right, I'll look for a motion in a second uh, to approve resolution amending ward boundary lines for the village of Crafton. Approve the resolution for questions and then the Ozaki County Supervisory District map, District Twelve and Nine, and since these are resolutions only to offer. All right. Right, we got everybody. Who did the offer? I think Lisa did the offer. Jerry, first. Motion.
I'll second.
Second. Very good. We have offer motion in second. Any questions for Katie on this, this time?
Okay.
Yes, please.
Um, Katie, if this is approved, then at the county level, when will this take effect?
Uh, as soon as the county would post the resolution to take effect, but ultimately, we do not have an election again until possibly February of next year, so, uh, but it would take effect immediately upon their passing of the last.
So does that change then the county supervisors and their districts as of immediately after the county board passes it?
Yes.
Okay, interesting. Has that, has that ever been done before that you, since you've been here?
Okay. Yeah, it's done by multiple um, municipalities, usually upon annexation, it happens.
Okay.
Cedarburg, the city of Cedarburg's done it, the town of Cedarburg has done it, city of Metlawn's done it. And you've done it before, not during my time.
Good. Do you have a question?
Here we go. Offer motion in second. Can we say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Then motion carries. We have a second resolution here, which will be for the county now. I will be correct, Katie. So. That will be uh, a motion uh, and offer motion in second to approve resolution amending ward boundary lines for village of Crafton and approve resolution request of amending the Ozaki County Supervisory District map, District Twelve and District Nine. Offer motion in second, please.
I'll offer.
I'll, so.
I'll second it.
Offer motion in second. Any discussion from us? Seeing them, hearing them, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And that motion carries. Uh, let's uh, go to the resolution to approve a memorandum of understanding between the village and town of Crafton and setting the termination date of the nineteen eighty five joint library agreement. Jesse?
Yes, absolutely. Um, under a person's uh, request to be heard, a bit of my thunder was stolen as uh, background information was summarized uh, very succinctly and uh, very clearly by uh, some library staff members, and I appreciate that. Thank you. Um, that said, we have a joint library agreement dating back to nineteen eighty six, um, not nineteen eighty five, nineteen eighty six. And this joint library is uh, agreement between the town and village of Crafton is set to expire on June twelfth. If in fact it does expire and no action is taken, uh, as previously, previously mentioned, um, there are services, funding issues, um, and just general operational difficulties that the village, or excuse me, that the library will incur. Uh, in order to maintain status as a public library, we wish to um, enter into a memorandum of under uh, understanding with the town of Crafton simply to expend, extend the current nineteen eighty six agreement to allow more time for discussions on a successor agreement to occur. By extending the nineteen eighty six agreement, that June twelfth deadline in essence goes away because we continue to operate under that existing agreement. Or it were, in essence, were to nullify the town's action to withdraw for the time being. This is not a part of the negotiations. I need to be very clear about that. This is a separate and distinct action item to simply keep in place that nineteen eighty six agreement to ensure the library stays in good standing with not only the state of Wisconsin, but also the monarch library system. What we are looking to accomplish with this memorandum of understanding is to incentivize both parties, being the village and the town, to reach a resolution and agreement sooner rather than later. Uh, we want to avoid any funding or operational issues, uh, should that June twelfth deadline be reached. Uh, this is before the village as soon as possible, as we had a joint meeting with some town representation, village representation, and representative from the Department of Public Instruction who walked through the different options that were available to us. Those options were touched on earlier. I won't uh, review those, but in short, at this point in time, we truly believe that the cleanest and most prudent course of action moving forward would simply be a memorandum of understanding to extend our current nineteen eighty six agreement to allow more time for negotiations to happen. However, that MOU does point out and uh, looks to incentivize or move the parties forward, being the town and village, to reach an agreement on a successor agreement sooner rather than later. Uh, that being said, um, I have before the village board a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding between the village and town of Crafton, extending the termination date of the nineteen eighty six joint library agreement, and that's an important uh, uh, correction as this memorandum of understanding was drafted off of um, uh, incorrect information. So it is actually, wherever it reads nineteen eighty five, it should read nineteen eighty six. That is the only update from that standpoint. Um, and so, looking to move forward with this memorandum of understanding, the town will have to take a separate and distinct action on this from their standpoint with regards to the MOU, but I felt it was in our best interest to get it in front of the village board as soon as possible to ma- maintain the village's proactive stance in making sure that the library stays in good standing.
Uh, Jesse, before we go any further, uh, with the site, you see that we received the updated draft received from town of Crafton, which seemingly refers to the uh, agreement that we called nineteen eighty five agreement. Um, that, that will be changed uh, before it comes to us for signature.
Yeah.
And also before it goes back to the town of Crafton.
Yes, it will.
Yes, uh, Mr. President, any motion would uh, would, would make that clerical change, and you're also have in front of you a minor edit from the town uh, that would be corrected as well.
Very good. Um, what we'll be looking for here, bring this to the table for discussion, I'm sure we will have some discussion on this, is um, a motion to uh, make a resolution approving the MOU between the village and town of Crafton, extending the termination date of the nineteen eighty five, what it is, it is set, joint library agreement. I'll need an offer, a motion in a second.
I'll offer.
Offer from Dave.
Um, two.
I'll second.
Okay, gotcha. All right, Amy, or Dave, Amy, and um, Curtis, any questions? We'll start with you guys.
Um, so Jesse, so basically, it's just giving us some wiggle room. Additional time.
Yep.
The library, the town are gonna work on cleaning up that agreement that they already started. Bring it back for approval.
Correct. This is separate and distinct from the agreement uh, that the, where we're at with the negotiations was discussed in closed session at our last meeting. Nothing has changed from that standpoint. Um, that said, your point, trustee Luft, this memorandum of understanding will simply leave that window open for those successor agreement negotiations um, longer than June twelfth.
Dave, will we set for me some discussion?
We do not, they, they have told me that they're gonna get uh, me a revised uh, agreement in the next week or so, and then we'll see where that goes, and that'll probably trigger another meeting.
Curtis? Nothing? Anyone else?
Yeah, yes. Um, so do they have to agree with what we're moving forward on? This protects us as a village of Crafton and the library?
Well, it's sort of uh, it's sort of holds the status quo. Would, you'll continue to act with the town under the old eighty six agreement, act and fund just as if nothing had happened for another year. And essentially, we'll take the next six months and see if we can come to an agreement with the town, but all terms are on the table.
So, so they have to agree also, correct?
They have to agree also.
And it looks like the next meeting is not until June eleventh.
Correct.
The day before's deadline. Um.
If I may address that, um, because I think uh, in the meeting that we had, I did ask Mr. Bartel, President, Chairman Bartel, if he could have a special meeting that we could uh, get this done before um, the eleventh, which is really the eleventh hour. Uh, and he said, well, he, he um, he would see, but he has no doubt that this will pass his board. Um, so I think that was uh, that was something we did ask him to consider doing this, if, if nothing else, for the health and vitality of the library.
Um, and then my last question is, um, this is really the first time I've, I've been aware that the DPI, you know, is also kind of partially driving this, that we don't agree to this extension, that we're in serious trouble.
Well, the deep, uh, yeah, the DPI, I, I don't wanna, uh, I don't wanna uh, diminish the DPI. The DPI has an advisory authority. They, uh, as you heard in the public comments, if, if we disband and form a a single village library, we, we are to go to them for, for an advisory opinion, and that takes thirty days. And so, as you heard in the comments, this stuff probably won't be able to happen by the, be able to happen by the twelfth or, so that's why I think all parties are agreeing to extend for a year.
Okay, now is my question. Have they really agreed, and it sounds like they have.
Well.
Officially, no.
How do I, the town board?
So I just hope that this moves forward quickly. Um, it would be great if we could get something before the deadline. Because it's been dragging on and dragging on for a year and a half, two years.
I do think.
We just all need to get in a room together.
I do think both parties feel that way. I think that, I do think that's the way the town feels as well. That's certainly what they've expressed.
Anyone else? Well, I can, I'm gonna make a comment here, uh. We are aware that they were canceling this contract um, uh, in June of uh, twenty twenty four. Um, and we did, I did have that discussion with Chairman Bartel, saying, this would be nice and easy if we just revised this. Purge the town to revise it, but instead it was canceled. On, on November, uh, middle of November, I don't have the exact date, um, Chairman Bartel did reach out to me and say, is the village interested in a joint agreement? So from June until November, nothing happened. Nothing happened because uh, the, the town was not interested. Now, the town's interested in November, and when did we get our uh, first contract from them?
I believe it was February.
February, so about three months before we got the first contract. I have to say that I'm um, rather uncomfortable with the fact that the, the town is really serious about negotiating this, and I would hope that they're going to come through on uh, on June eleventh to say this is what they want to do, but I also believe we, you know, we have funding now, which I think is great. We have funding through the end of uh, till June thirtieth of twenty twenty six. Am I correct in that?
Correct.
So um, while I'm disappointed on how this went and what's, you know, really taking place with the town, I, I, I think that we need to approve this resolution to get us through the next year, but I think we'll know in rather short order here, um, probably in terms of um, weeks to months. Uh, because uh, the last I heard was, we'll pretty much know by the end of December. But I'm hopeful that we'll know sooner than that based on uh, what they bring back to us, based on the contract Mike did work with very carefully with um, uh, making sure that DPI standards were met from the initial contract offering from the town. So uh, hopeful, but uh, you know, I think we may be looking at, independent on this, we may, may be looking at a municipal library uh, uh, that, that could be coming up. So, just uh, just my two cents on that. I really do challenge the town to uh, support the library and continue to support as, as we've seen in the past, so. So all I got to say on that, but uh, so we've got an offer motion in second for this, uh, and we'll take a vote at this point in time unless there's any other discussion. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? And motion carries. All right, uh, let's go to uh, the Lions Club.
The Crafton Lions Club approached the village about the possibility of creating a community garden uh, here in the village. Uh, village staff did work with the Lions Club representatives to find an appropriate location and began crafting an agreement as well as obtaining appropriate use approvals. The, in February, the planning commission uh, granted a conditional use permit to the Lions Club for a community garden use at the site that was jointly identified um, on the uh, village-owned property that houses the Crafton Little League Baseball Complex. Uh, one of the, the site plans that are attached will note that on the north end of the uh, paved parking field, there is a uh, small triangular shaped area that is relatively smooth, and the village would look to help uh, rough grade that even further for the placement of raised garden beds, um, as well as other um, items to establish a community garden uh, by the Crafton Lions Club. What we do need to um, enact would be a lease for the use of that village property, um, in this case, a lease for the establishment of a community garden. This lease document that is before the village board this evening is based off of the Crafton Little League lease. I used that as a template and then simply uh, um, updated it to reflect a community garden type of use. Some highlights of the lease agreement that is attached for your consideration is an initial six-year term with cancellation rights by both parties. A relocation clause in the event Crafton Little League expands its facilities. Insurance coverage requirements, that'd be liability. Um, it does set forth responsibilities. Insurance coverage requirements, that'd be a liability. Um it does set forth responsibilities for the village to help with the operations of this um. Uh community garden. The village will fill a water storage tank that the group tends uh is looking to have on site. We will do that with our uh watering truck as part of our our normal route. We um. Go through downtown and water the flower baskets as well as the uh decorative flower pots that are placed throughout the village. We will then in turn also uh visit the um village property and ensure that the water tank is fill filled. On site for use at the community garden. We will not be watering the gardens. We're only filling the storage tank. Just want to be clear about that. And then, as I uh mentioned, uh the villages will rough grade the location of the gardens on the area delineated on the site plan, that triangle-shaped area. Um will rough grade that for the placement of raised garden beds um and then uh look to uh. Move forward to ensure that they're on that uh water storage tank filling schedule. Um the lease agreement does call for communication and coordination between Grafton Little League and the community garden. I have spoken with the president of Grafton Little League uh himself and his board are amenable to having a neighbor, if you will. Um and they understand the responsibility for communication between the two organizations. The village will implement this lease. However, we would step back from the. Direct conversation between the Lions Club and Grafton Little League as to avoid conflicts of use on that property. Um with that, the um lease document is uh has been reviewed and approved by the Grafton Lions Club. Uh village legal counsel has recommended a minor amendment to the Little League lease as well, just simply to call out that a community garden. Is on the property. That will be coming forward to the village board at a uh at our next board meeting. Otherwise, uh I'm looking for a motion to approve the lease agreement with the Grafton Lions Club for a community garden as presented.
Mr. President, the only the excellent summary, the only add-on that I would have is any motion, if you are inclined to approve, the motion should be. Contingent on the amendment with with the Little League, the approved mutually approved amendment with the Little League to allow the use at the site.
Very good. With that said, I'll look for a motion to. Through the Grafton Lions, uh the lease agreement with the Grafton Lions Club uh for community garden as presented. With suggestion that might mean.
Make the motion.
I'll second it.
Please send Dave if he has questions.
Sure, I have a couple. Um Jesse, you did say this is similar to the Timothy Wooden. Um you didn't.
Grafton Little League.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Um. That does bring the question about lease that we have with Timothy Wooden. It's the same cost. Do they have to provide their own insurance also as as the Lions have to?
I would have to look at that document. I don't remember the terms off the top of my head. This is modeled to match, in essence, match what Grafton Little League has. As far as a lease agreement on that vacant, well, was vacant uh village property. Um the wooden building document was not taken into account with this drafting at all. Um I would have to look at that specific document, speak to the terms. Sure.
I feel like it probably was. Um my other question is, it's uh has the has the draft? Been um a beat upon for the uh relationship between the waiver partnership? Has that been done yet?
The the waiver, the Lions Club would have to create their own waiver form. We would not step in to do that for them. Um that has been communicated and they understand their responsibility with that, as well as their responsibility to complete and submit. A bulk water um application form to receive water from the village and be charged accordingly. Um so they understand there are um responsibilities on their part as well.
Um getting soil ready.
The water is subject to that bulk water permit. Um that is the only charge. We are not charging them for staff time, nor would we. We are not charging them to rough grade the area for the community garden to place the raised beds. We're not charging for that, no.
Okay. Under um situations, and just say that um. They are not allowed to attach any fixtures or place permanent or temporary fixtures such as raised garden beds. You see that it's a third, second or third sentence under Article seven? Is that just too wordy there?
With a because that goes on to say without prior written consent of the village. So basically, they can't do it without the proper permits, is what that entire sentence says. Um so yes, they they are allowed to do those things with the proper permits. And the conditional use permit is a huge step forward. If they would look to put an accessory shed on it, they uh may need a building permit depending on the size. But um yeah, that entire sentence is that thou shalt not improve without proper permits i- is summary of that sentence.
Okay.
Yep.
Two. Sarah?
Be charging.
Correct, correct.
Jesse, are we creating additional parking or are they just gonna be sharing the parking space?
They'll be sharing the parking is that is there, which is why I emphasized with both parties, they need to coordinate between their two groups as far as um. Being a former former Little League coach, game times, there is a um midsummer celebration that they do where that complex will be full. Of baseball parents and kids. Um they will need to make sure to coordinate between their two groups. So as to avoid those conflicts. Um I've spoken directly with the Grafton Little League president, as well as the representative from the Lions Club about that. They agree and completely understand and they will be communicating directly with one another. The big reason for that is I did not want the village. Um to lose anything in translation as far as trying to coordinate their events. It is between those two tenants to coordinate their events. Yep.
Anyone else? So uh just a couple of things. Um I I don't see any member of the Lions in attendance this evening. So. Member in understanding this, at uh the planning commission, there was a very nice presentation. Regarding how um this would be a place that's going to really deal with the Lions uh focus to decrease hunger, and I think that's that's great. However, I did find out later that some of the spaces are going to be sublet for cost. I just want the board to know that, you know, they may be using this as a way to offset some of their costs associated with that. So um uh that didn't come up at planning commission, but I think in fairness closure that needs to be made to everybody. Given that I do have some fiduciary responsibilities with the Grafton Lions, I am recusing myself from this because I sometimes sign checks for them. So I'm gonna kind of back out and make this decision. Also, I will not vote on it. So any further questions, we'll go to a vote. Any none hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? And I am recused. Okay, let's move in that that the pass. So congratulations to the Lions. Um let's go to a quick report of finance and personnel committees to accept the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending December first.
Yeah, it's in great, the the comprehensive, the annual comprehensive financial report is a very long title for our annual audit. Um each year, the by law, the village must be, as a municipality, must be audited by an uh independent accounting firm. Um we do have Baker Tilly, Baker Tilly under service contract to conduct that audit. Um as presented at the finance personnel committee, the village received a clean audit, which is the highest and best ranking that you can get. Um there are no conflicts, there are no concerns, there were no errors. Um that said, a couple of the highlights include, as I mentioned, a clean audit, but also the fact that the general uh. Village's general fund balance did in fact grow um for several reasons, being permit revenue, interest earnings, et cetera. Um and that there were no deficiencies, whether it be from an accounting standpoint or policy or practice standpoint. Um that were reported by the auditor. So all all told, the uh job well done by our finance department for accumulating the records, providing them. To the audit team and then the audit team in turn combs through all of that, does interview uh some staff members accordingly. And provides that uh comprehensive report to our finance personnel committee, which is recommended for acceptance to the village board with all of the good news attached.
Very good. Thank you, Jesse. Um so I look for a motion in a second to. Accept the annual comprehensive financial report for the year ending December three. Andy? Any questions at all? Any questions for anybody else? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Let's go to public safety. I talked about the bid for Action Target for the um.
Uh yes, our uh range renovations are moving forward. Um the police department did receive a. Bid from Action Target uh not to exceed ninety-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars um for the project. There is a motion coming forward out of the public safety committee to authorize the chief of police to move forward with the planned reservation renovations. At uh the the price noted. Uh it is also important note, there is a follow-up action. Uh coming up next here on the agenda to accept a couple of donations. One of those donations would be applied towards this. Um range renovation project, which uh brings the overall cost within budget. Um so a motion to approve is. Um recommended by the public safety committee and Chief uh Capener is in attendance this evening, can speak to particulars.
Okay, I'll take a motion in a second to approve the bid from Action Target to exceed ninety-six thousand, two hundred and ninety-five dollars and authorize the uh chief of police to move forward with planned reservations. I'll make the motion. Dave and Amy, any questions? Any questions for the rest?
Yes.
You said.
Um so I looked at the information from public safety. There's a lot of information on the um. The estimate. There's a couple of things, chief, that um kind of uh caught my attention. Um it looks like we're going to get a two-lane um.
Chief, please come on. Sorry.
I know we had a four, four-lane firing um area and we're going down to two, is that correct? And do you, do you see that that's gonna affect our ability to to use it because it means happy lot of people?
No, it's it it we're still gonna be able to use it for. Just for safety purposes and based on this um information and recommendations received from the I R O's training staff. Um two lanes would be sufficient. Um and it would actually be a little more safety in the range uh as opposed to before that. Right now, they're using two lanes anyway. Um just because of that, I think it's like before I was trying to make it to the city.
Um the other thing I was concerned about under customer responsibilities, this was the information um with the contract. It talks about a number of things that look like is now covered in their estimate. Things like the lighting and you had mentioned that the lighting wasn't great in the in the firing range. It talked about the ceiling structure that they don't have anything to do with. Um so I'm I'm worried about that and I wonder how that's gonna be reflected in the cost.
Yeah, so it is like. So the ceiling structure is actually covered in there. Um they're gonna use the acoustic tiles in the in the ceiling. Uh and the lighting is actually going to be um through VPW. Through our agreement with VPW right now that when they replace our LED lighting and and whatnot throughout the building, they will replace those lights as well. Um as part of this project.
Um and is the line item from your budget the ninety-six thousand dollars or is it less than that because you had donations?
That's correct. So the original budget was ninety-one thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars. Donation, the rest of it was art. Um we did need to make up the the difference um between the ninety-six to ninety-five and the ninety-one thousand. So we we went back to our citizens and our citizens' donations. Uh and we were able to accumulate enough donations to cover the difference.
As I was in the last meeting. Um and then what's your thought on other communities utilizing this and and will there be a cost?
No, there there won't be any cost for other communities. We tried to do that now. However, it just didn't. It it wasn't um beneficial to any of the communities. Uh and we really wanted to just, we wanted to keep this range available to everybody. Um to use, especially during the winter months. Uh the county allows us to use their outdoor range. Don't charge us for anything. Uh and Cedarburg allows us to use their miles system. So we don't, they don't charge us for that. So we didn't, we didn't see any need in charging anybody uh any responsibility.
Okay, and if if this goes over cost, you'll you'll talk about that with public safety?
Yeah, if it goes over cost, which I don't think it will.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right, motion to approve the bid. Um uh we have a motion in second. In favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. We'll go to item number two, uh motion to approve acceptance of twenty-dollar cash donation and four donations to a totaling. Five thousand, three hundred dollars for the Grafton Police Department. Uh do we need any further discussion on that or?
For village policy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Sarah. Any discussion on the spokes? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed?
Full of good news this evening for the village board. Um the emergency repairs at the lime kilns are complete and the construction fencing. Uh is to be removed this week. We're I'm very happy to report that. That is ahead of schedule. They were looking to finish by the end of May, so uh weather cooperated. Their crews mobilized and uh we do have those emergency repairs complete. All of our seasonal staff on the public works department will be on board starting next week. This will greatly improve our efficiency. In our lawn mowing operations throughout the village. So we have uh quite frankly, had a bit of uh struggle here this spring with uh the rain. And some of the warm, a little bit of warmer weather uh to keep up, but uh with all of our seasonal staff being on board next week, you will see. Increased uh mowing operations uh moving forward. Last but not least, uh the installation of the new light pole at Highway sixty in Cheyenne is tentatively scheduled for May twenty-seventh. And then the replacement traffic signal will be installed on that new pole as soon as possible thereafter. So we finally have a date for the pole. We do not have a date for the uh signal yet, but we have a date for the pole and light pole installation. Uh as the board may recall, this is a bit of a unique situation in that the traffic signal is mounted directly to the uh streetlight pole. Uh we energies under current uh policies and procedures does not allow that. However, this is, I guess, grandfathered per se, and so it is being reestablished as just that with the signal attached to the streetlight pole. So. Um we do have um a schedule set and we'll look to uh keep our fingers crossed and that will move forward accordingly. That is what I have for report this evening. Thank you.
Waiting for licenses and then seeing licenses approved, which is for some big motion second for discussion. Questions at all against the.
There was nothing.
Please.
Jessica or Jesse, it's on uh it's on the Justice Department of Transportation. Um and it was for the highway, WISDA, Highway sixty project. It looks like it's design work on Washington Street.
Okay.
And it's nine thousand, four hundred dollars. Is is that a percent of the portion that we will owe?
I don't review those invoices. Um we can certainly check and follow up and get back to you.
Yeah, if you could please. It's good, just a great idea if you don't have a chance to look at the. Always encouraged, so our staff can respond as quickly. So we greatly appreciate the board's um. Ability just to look at these before. So we have a motion in second. In favor, say aye. Opposed? Very good. And I'll take a motion to adjourn. Dave and Amy, thank you very much. We could have gotten it sooner, but it hasn't been for the Ozaki Press taking so many pictures. Yes, the Ozaki Press is on. Thank you very much. Anyway, thank you. Today and I will see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you very much.
We need a vote.
Yep.
Better.
Oh, yeah, it's forward.
Better vote. And do we all agree that we want to get out of here?
Yes.
Okay, opposed? Thank you. If that motion carries, see you in.